Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for tonight's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, we have the roll call, Mr. Holcomb.
Chairman Washington.
Here.
Vice Chairman Groul. Commissioner Addison.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Brunel.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Hi.
Commissioner Ellender.
Here.
Commissioner Fowler.
Here.
And Commissioner Scroggs.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. We'll move on to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July 21st meeting? Motion by Commissioner Addison, second by Commissioner Boyd. Are there any objections to approving the minutes? Seeing none, these items have now been approved. At this time, I'll read in the rules for conducting public hearings. This is a public meeting. Any interested member of the public who wishes to comment on an item from this agenda may comment in person at City Hall, 222 St. Louis Street, 3rd floor, room 348 during the meeting. Members of the public desiring to speak on a particular item should refer to a meeting agenda and complete necessary information prior to the meeting by filling out a request to speak card indicating which item you wish to speak and place it in the designated location prior to the meeting. Applicant and applicant representatives for the proposal will speak first for a total or combined period not to exceed 15 minutes. Proponents will speak, then the opponents. Each speaker will not be allowed more than three minutes. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks by avoiding duplication in their presentations. Applicant will be allowed a total period of five minutes for rebuttal. Opponents will not be allowed to rebut. Items placed on the consent agenda by the Planning Commission staff will not have time allocated for speaking unless there is a member of the public at the meeting who wishes to speak on the item. In such cases, the proposal will follow the standard procedure. We can now move on to the consent agenda, Mr. Baldwin.
There are no consent items for withdrawal or deferral. Consent items for approval. Item 5, Case 2725, 1750 Gulf South Parkway, to rezone from rural to light commercial 3, LC 3, on property located on the west side of Gulf South Parkway, south of Innovation Park Drive. Item 6, Case 2825, 6263 Comete Drive, to rezone from heavy commercial C2 to single-family residential A1. Property is located on the north side of Comete Drive, east of Plank Road. Item 9, SS225, Rosalie G. Moise Property. Proposed subdivision with public street located on the south side of 72nd Avenue, west of Plank Road. Item 10, SP525, Mansions in the Park Phase 2, 7250 Perkins Road. Proposed multifamily located on the south side of Perkins Road, east of Kenilworth Parkway. Planning Commission staff certifies that all of these items are consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Code.
Mr. Director, do we have any additional? Do we have any items that were pulled from consent?
We have no speaker cards for any items on consent.
Okay.
Actually, item...
Six.
Item 6 has been pulled by the public, so that item will be heard in regular agenda order.
Thank you. Commission members, you've heard all the items that have been placed on the consent agenda that are to be taken with one vote. Are there any members of the Planning Commission who have an additional item that they would like to be pulled from the consent agenda and heard as part of the regular agenda? Are there any members of the public present who would like to speak on any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion? Motion from Commissioner Ellender, second from Commissioner Addison. Are there any objections to accepting the items that have been placed on the consent agenda? Seeing none, those items have been approved. We can now move on to the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, the next two items can be taken together, Items 2 and Items 3.
Thank you.
Property is located on the north side of Mount Pleasant, Zachary Road, east of Samuel's Road, Council District 1. No. The applicant is Randy Herring. The current future BR land use designation is agricultural, rural. The requested future BR land use designation is commercial. The existing zoning is rural, with a requesting zoning of commercial warehouse in 1, CW 1. PA 525, 20414 Samuel's Road, related to Case 2925.
Staff recommends approval of the plan amendment based upon examination of the area at a further level of detail and compatibility with surrounding uses. Staff also certifies that the proposed request meets the criteria for a change of zoning if the Companion Comprehensive Plan Amendment is approved, being compatible with surrounding uses and conforming to Unified Development Code requirements.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak for a period not to exceed 15 minutes. Good evening, sir. Could you make sure that your mic is on, sir? No, at the bottom toward the base should be a little button. Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. Randy Herring, I'm with Derby's Fall-Goo Commercial Real Estate in Baton Rouge, 10455 Jefferson Highway. This property is... I represent a client that would like to buy the property and do a build-to-suit for a tenant for a long-term lease, and it would be a... Started out as a 4,000-square-foot warehouse. I'm not 100% sure. Maybe it'll be a little larger, could be as high as 10,000 square feet if applicable. I called the planning office, and they didn't seem to think there was any issue going from four to 10, so I really don't know at this point, but that's basically all it is. The property adjoins the new Jerry Lane dealership. I mean, it adjoins it, so I think it's a good fit for a commercial application right there. And be glad to answer any questions, but seems anybody might have, but that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I don't believe we have any additional speaker cards, so at this time, I'll close the public hearing, excuse me, and invite any questions, comments, or motions from the commission. There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Coleman. Is there a second to that motion? Second from Commissioner Ellender. Any objections or any further discussion? Seeing none, those items have been approved. We'll now move on to item number 4, Text Amendment 125, Chapter 9 Use Regulations.
This is a text amendment to Chapter 9 Use Regulations in the Unified Development Code. You remember, we passed a draft copy out at your last meeting to review. This is an amendment to revise specifically Section 9.5.2D in regards to fences and walls, amending the height and location criteria of fences and walls, allowing for placement closer to a street when other similar fences or walls are located in the same subdivision or when abutting a wider sidewalk or multi-use path. Planning Commission staff certifies that the proposed UDC amendment is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. This amendment provides an exception, allowing new fences and walls to match the style and height of predominant permitted fences and walls already existing in subdivisions and planned developments where permitted. This change also distinguishes between streets and alleys when determining the location of a new fence or wall, permitting setback reductions when the fence or wall abuts a wider sidewalk, but when a similar permitted fence or wall already exists in the area. This item was worked on in conjunction with the Building Official Office and Department of Development. In addition, this item was sent to the Federation of Civic Associations for review and also the Growth Coalition. Both submitted comments of no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. We don't appear to have any speaker course for this item, so there will be no need for a public hearing, so at this time, I'll invite any questions or comments from the commission. If there are none, are there any motions? Motion for approval, I'm assuming from Commissioner Addison, is a second from Commissioner Scroggs. Any objections or need for further discussion? Seeing none, this item has been approved. We'll now move on to item number 6, Case 2825, 6263 Comete Drive.
Case 2825, 6263 Comete Drive. Property is located on the north side of Comete Drive, east Plank Road, Council District 2, Kennedy. The applicant is Lance Robisho. The future BR land use designation is residential neighborhood. The existing zone is heavy commercial, C2, with a requesting zoning of single-family residential A1, Case 2825, 6263 Comete Drive.
Staff certifies that the proposed request meets the criteria for a change of zoning, being consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, compatible with surrounding uses, and conforming to Unified Development Code requirements.
Commission members, at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak for a period not to exceed 15 minutes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lance Robisho. As mentioned, we are requesting that the C2 portion of this property, which is approximately 90 acres, the C2 portion being about five acres, be rezoned to A1, which is consistent with the remainder of the property and the surrounding properties. That's about it. If y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
There you go.
We have one speaker card that is in opposition for Sergio Orellana. Good evening. You have the floor for three minutes, sir.
I'm sorry, this is all... This is new to me, and I probably... Please bear with me. But anyway, I live on 6368 Comete Drive, and recently I purchased the next property, you know, at 6250. And many, many of the neighbors that would know that I put up big, long fence in front of the property, not to keep, not to hide nothing, not to hide, you know, something bad, but just to keep it a little private. But I've been... I'm very concerned about it. I've been living in Baker for several years, since 1994, in different areas in Baker, and I got two kids, they were born and... They was born and raised in, you know, in Baker, and I'm very concerned. All this is new to me. I'm probably not speaking the way I was supposed to, but I would like to really, I mean, I would do the best I can for stopping whatever, you know, that's about to happen, because I know I'm just a little guy here. Actually, I'm the only Hispanic guy here. But I noticed that over the years, I've been around construction since 1994, and I know over the years that contractors, they would not care about, you know, the community. They're just always about... It's all about money. It's all about money. And like I say, I've been around construction for things since 1994. I am just a painter, and all I can say is, I know two names, two contractors, you know, that they're gonna try to build those houses, and I'm sorry for the people who's gonna buy those houses, because I know so. I am a painter. I am the last guy who go behind everybody else to make the house look good. But the bottom line is, the construction is very, very... It's very, very poor. There's not quality at all. If they're gonna build this kind of houses across the street from where I live, I'm sure, you know, I mean, I'm sure, you know, many young couple, they just got married, they're gonna try to buy a house, they're gonna... They're happy to, you know, they got approved from the bank to buy a new house, but they have no clue what they buying.
You have about 20 seconds, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. So, I hope they're not gonna get approved. I'm just a little guy, Hispanic, I'm the only... But anyway, just... I don't know what else to say, you know, but I just... I've been around construction, and I know what really, really, really is going on. It's all about, who you know are downtown, and it's about this.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll invite the applicant back for a five-minute rebuttal.
Yeah, so at this point, we're just looking to get the property rezoned to see if it's even feasible to put a development. We don't have any contractors selected. We haven't even really talked to any contractors, so definitely hear the, you know, constituents' concerns, and we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you. Commission members, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Director Holcomb, before inviting any questions or comments from the commission, this is a downzoning, correct, that's being requested?
That's correct, Chairman. This is an item you rarely see. The applicant and the property owner has voluntarily submitted a rezoning application that significantly downzones the property. It restricts it to single-family residential at a very restrictive density of 4.1 units per acre of single-family residential zoning. Right now, it's one of our most intense zoning categories, heavy commercial, C2. The C2 zoning in its current form allows multifamily at 29 units per acre. It allows heavy commercial. It allows liquor stores. It allows vape stores. It allows tattoo parlors, heavy commercial mechanic shops, many undesirable uses that we often hear concerns about. This, if approved, this body is simply making a recommendation onto council, but the applicant and property owner has voluntarily submitted an application to significantly downgrade and restrict the property to one of our most restrictive zoning districts.
So just to quickly clarify for the edification of the speaker, if we were to not approve this request, those intensive zoning uses could happen right now, but they're asking for far more restrictive zoning, in which case, they will not be able to do that. They would be able to have to operate in a far more strict category. Is that correct?
That's correct, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from the commission? Commissioner Scroggs.
Director Holcomb, with C2, could they still build single-family homes on C2?
C2 allows single-family, but there's a code requirement that before you apply for permits, that essentially kicks it back to the Planning Commission, and there's a mechanism that requires them to downgrade it. So essentially, they're getting in front of that now. It used to be all permissive, and since then, it does have a restriction in there for single-family.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And again, I need to state for the public, specifically the gentleman that spoke with concerns, this is not... The action tonight is not for a development. It's not for a subdivision. There's no development rights tonight. If and when the applicant does decide to submit a subdivision, if they choose to do so, that would be a separate public hearing. Our office would advertise that item. We would put another yellow sign on the property, and at that time, I would encourage you to be part of that public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Any additional questions? Commissioner Scroggs. Other questions from the commission? Any motions? There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Addison to approve this item. Is there a second to that motion? Second from Commissioner Fowler, are there any objections or need for further discussion? Seeing none, this item has been approved. We'll now move on to item number 7, PUD 124 Nicholson West Concept Plan Revision.
PUD 124, Nicholson West Concept Plan Revision. Property is located on the west side of Nicholson Drive, north of West Johnson Street, Council District 10, Coleman. The applicant is Carolyn Martin. The applicant is proposing a revision to remove medium-density residential, modify high-density residential, and decrease commercial office space. Future BR land use designation is mixed use. PUD 124, Nicholson West Concept Plan Revision.
Staff certifies that the proposed request meets the minimum criteria for planning unit development, being consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, compatible with surrounding uses, and conforming to Unified Development Code requirements.
Thank you. Commission members, at this time, I'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak for a period not to exceed 15 minutes. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. Andre Rodre, speaking on behalf of the applicant, 1200 Brickyard Lane. Again, as introduced, this is a revision to the current approved concept PUD plan to eliminate the medium-density residential, to reduce the commercial office square footage, and then also modify the high-density residential, which is a reduction in total units and overall reduction in density of the concept plan itself. We were deferred from last meeting due to some concerns with the adjacent property owners. The owner has reached out to those property owners, also reached out to the council person for Ms. Coleman. In regards to this, they removed trees that were at question and a concern about that, so at this point, we resolved all the issues and concerns that were addressed in the last meeting and respectfully request approval of this concept plan revision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are no additional speaker cords, so I will close the public hearing, and before opening for any questions or comments, I'd like to offer the floor to Commissioner Coleman, who was obviously involved in this particular case, to share any comments she'd like to.
Yes. Good evening, all, and I'd like to say to the applicant, I am grateful that you all followed up, and the constituents that had concerns, that you all addressed them, and that I'd like to make a motion that this be approved tonight.
There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Coleman to approve this item. There's a motion second by Commissioner Boyd. Are there any objections? Seeing none, that item is approved. At this time, we'll move on to item number 8, Cup 625 Louisiana Maize.
Cup 625 Louisiana Maize, 14162 Pierce Road. Property is located on the south side of Pierce Road, east Rams Road, Council District 1. No. The applicant is Donald and Vicky Corville. The applicant is proposing an outdoor commercial recreation facility. The future BR land use designation is agricultural and rural. Cup 625 Louisiana Maize.
Staff certifies that the proposed request meets the minimum requirements of the Unified Development Code for Planning Commission consideration.
Planning Commission Office has received 125 messages in support and 121 messages in opposition to this item.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak for a period not to exceed 15 minutes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How you doing?
All right.
Good afternoon, chairpersons. My name is Donald Corville, and this is my wife, Vicky Corville. Together, we own and operate Louisiana Maize LLC. We truly appreciate the opportunity to be here today, to request your approval for a conditional use permit, so we can bring our seasonal corn maize and agritourism activities to our new location on Pierce Road in Zachary. We've been married for over 50 years and spent the majority of our lives as full-time farmers. Over the years, we've grown corn, soybeans, wheat, oats, milo. Farming has always been more than occupation for us. It's a way of life, our heritage and our livelihood. In the late 1990s, commodity prices had fallen so low that it became very challenging to make a profit. We began seriously thinking about what could we do with farming while also creating something sustainable for the future. In December of 1999, a former employee came to visit us and told us about taking his daughter to a corn maze on a school field trip. She loved it so much that he took the whole family back the following weekend. Being a farmer himself, he thought navigating a corn maze would be simple, but it was more challenging than expected. He told us this might be something you'd be interested in. We looked into it and found that Brett Herf, CEO of the Maize Company, helped farmers across the country design and operate corn mazes. We joined his organization in early 2000, opened our very first corn maze in September of that year in East Baton Rouge Parish, just south of the LSU campus. Since 2000, we have operated the Louisiana Maize every fall, always on rented property. We've been in West Baton Rouge Parish for the... We were in West Baton Rouge Parish, and for 15 years before our move, we were in St. Helena Parish. Over those decades, thousands of families, students, and community groups have enjoyed the maize. We have consistently maintained a strong safety record. In fact, we have not had a single claim brought against us in 17 years. Every attraction is staffed, and we operate under Louisiana's limited liability law agritourism passed in 2009. We became certified as a safe farm through the LSU Ag Center. In 2023, we had the opportunity to sell our farmland and purchase property on Pierce Road in Zachary. All of our decision to buy that property was based on the understanding that we could move our corn maze there. We purchased the land in April of 2023. In the fall of 2023, we operated one last season in St. Helena Parish. Then in 2004, we began preparing to bring the maize to its new home. When we submitted our site plan formatted for the same way we had always done in other parishes, we learned that East Baton Rouge Parish held different requirements. Since our event is seasonal, operating only in October and November, we had hoped to get approved before planting in 2024, but the timeline made it clear we would not know the outcome until mid-October. That was too late for our fall season, so we made the decision to pause and continue the permitting process for 2025. We have now completed and submitted all required paperwork and professionally-prepared site plan. The maize is planted and as a seasonal agricultural event, not a year-round operation. We are not seeking to rezone the property from its current rural agricultural designation. Our proposed 2025 season will run from October 4th through November 16th. Our general public days, 14 total days, Saturdays and Sundays only, 9 to 6. Field trips scheduled by reservation only, Monday through Friday from 9 to 1, 30 days during the season. Our focus is to conduct strictly daytime, family-oriented activities. We will no longer be haunting. Security personnel will be present on all weekends, all public weekends. All of our activities take place during daylight hours between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM on weekends and 9:00 AM to 1:00 on weekdays for field trips. We will not have nighttime events, amplified concerts, or other volume, high-volume activities. Our maize is not just about fun, it's about connecting people, especially children, to agriculture. Throughout the property, we have educational boards, fun facts about crops, animals, aquaculture such as corn, pupkins, sugarcane, fish... such as corn, pupkins, sugarcane, fish, pigs, rabbits. Over ninety percent of our activities are agricultural-based. This educational component is one of the reasons school field trips have been such a big part of our operation for twenty-five years. Teachers appreciate that students learn where their food comes from while enjoying an active outdoor experience. For nearly twenty-five years, we have operated a safe, family-focused, agricultural-based event that draws visitors from near and far. We have the experience, the safety record, and the community commitment to ensure the Louisiana Maze will continue to be an asset to this region. This conditional use permit will allow us to continue our tradition at a permanent home in Zachary without changing the rural agricultural character of the property. We respectfully ask for your support and approval so that we can open our gates to the public this October and share Louisiana Maze with a new generation of families. Thank you for your time, and we are happy to answer any questions. I also have a, I'm sorry. I also have a letter that came in late, we'd be glad to submit it to you, from the sheriff of St. Helena Parish, Clay Schutz. Louisiana Maze, AKA Cajun Country Corn Maze, was a very welcome business in the parish of St. Helena from 2008 to 2024. Although this business was seasonal, this business held its own without any incident over sixteen-year period. Although I was not the standing sheriff during this time period, I can honestly say we are sad to see them go. They were a good wholesome business that our parish benefited from. I would suggest allowing them the opportunity in your parish. Do I have any questions coming?
Having some issues with this mic tonight. That's it for now, thank you, sir. We have Vic Corville listed also. Do you wish to speak at this time? You don't have to. Okay. And we have one more speaker card in favor for Beth Crochet.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you both, all of you, for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Beth Crochet, I'm the daughter of Donald and Vicki Corville, and obviously I'm a little biased, but I think that they're doing a good thing, and they hope to be able to continue that tradition that they've had for twenty years. In 2023, when my parents sold their property in the Chaffleya spillway, my brother and I truly believed they would use the sale to enjoy a well-deserved retirement. After all, in their late sixties, they had already given so much of their lives to community and farming, but instead of slowing down, their passion for agretainment and bringing families together and educating children took priority. They've invested in a new fifty-acre-plus ranch, which they have worked tirelessly to prepare for this fall event. It is without question a labor of love. Now, you might imagine, at their age with plenty capable help, that they would be the kind of managers of their corn maze that would sit back and let everyone else do the work, but that's farther than the truth. My mom, at every event, is in the admission building welcoming every single customer, giving free tokens to the children who come to visit. And my dad is operating his B-Train all night, all day, all the time. It's the one position that he keeps when he is open, and I think it's because he really loves what he does and loves entertaining the kids and bringing their farm to the community. They are not business owners that sit on the sidelines, they are deeply invested in creating joy and connection and memories with every family who visit. Their farm is more than an attraction, it's a place where kids can run and laugh and learn, and where parents and grandparents can share in that magic. I share this with you because it reflects the spirit behind the permit request. My parents aren't just asking for approval to run a corn maze, they're asking for the chance to continue what they've dedicated their lives to, bringing families together in a wholesome, safe, and joyful environment. I hope that you see what they have created and identify the even greater value by allowing them to continue in Zachary. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call up the first speaker that is in opposition, that is Ashley Chandler. Sure. That looks fine where you are. You have the floor for three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Chandler, and I have lived in this community for over thirty-seven years. I live adjacent to this proposed attraction on land that has been farmed by my family since the eighteen hundreds. For over a century, generation after generation, my family has worked this soil, cared for this community, and treasured the quiet rural character that makes it so special. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of hundreds of my neighbors who share deep concerns about this proposal. We want to be clear, our opposition is not against family activities or agriculture, it is about protecting the safety, tranquility, and character of our rural community. We have collected three hundred and eighty-seven signatures from local residents of pride. That number represents families, farms, and households who all share one message in asking you to listen to us and consider the real and lasting consequences of this project. This community has been a quiet rural haven for generations, families living here in peace, the farmland, and the way of life that has been built by the generations before us. Our opposition rests on several key issues. First, our rural roads were never designed to carry the traffic of an attraction this size. This attraction will draw large crowds into an area with narrow roads and very limited ingress and egress. This creates serious risks for residents, visitors, and emergency response. Second, this community has always been a place of quiet evenings where you can hear the crickets, not crowds. A seasonal entertainment venue of this size brings amplified sound, loudspeakers, generators, cannons blasting, screaming, and activity late into the evening. That noise will carry across fields, disturbing families, livestock, and wildlife that depend on a natural and peaceful environment. Third, this maze is built directly on top of five major pipelines. We have done extensive research on this issue, and we could not find a single corn maze attraction anywhere in the United States built over active pipelines, not one. If something went wrong, it would not just be a local tragedy, it could be a major catastrophe that draws national news coverage and leaves this commission answering for why it was ever allowed in the first place.
You have about thirty seconds.
And finally, the heart of this matter, our way of life. This is the last rural area of East Baton Rouge Parish. Once we open the door for any commercial attractions, we cannot go back. It will be a gateway for more to come. The quiet fields and wildlife and heritage of family farms like mine will forever be changed. Our community is asking you to help us preserve what generations have worked so hard to protect open land, peace, quiet, and the safety of families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is for Susan Morris.
Good evening. My name is Susan Morris, and I have lived in this community for nearly fifty-six years. Fifteen of those years, I was the rants manager on the very property you are considering tonight. I currently live next door, and I have livestock next to this property. I know this land inside and out, I've worked its pastures, I've raised livestock on it, I've birthed lives on it, and saved lives on it. I know the positives and the dangers of this property. First off, this project would funnel hundreds of cars and buses down a narrow farm-to-market road with little to no shoulder. Pierce Road is not a tourist highway, it is the backbone of our farming community. Farmers move hay heavy tractors down it every day. Imagine trying to maneuver a tractor and a baler while tourists are stopping suddenly parking on the shoulders and wandering near the road with children. One accident is all that it takes. Let me point this out clearly, that this attraction will be running during our hay season, which is our busiest, most dangerous time on the road. That means more slow-moving equipment, more farmers hauling, and more chances for tragic collisions. Once visitors have parked in the parking lot, they will walk down a crushed concrete driveway. Crushed concrete driveway with large, sharp boulders. The concrete is jagged and uneven, a tripping hazard for children, the elderly, and a nightmare for anyone in a wheelchair. The planned air cannons and constant noise will shatter the peace of our community, wildlife, livestock, and especially cattle and horses. Cattle don't tolerate loud blasts of noise, they will react with a fight-or-flight instinct. When a thousand-pound cow gets scared, it can go right through a fence. Just one cow's reaction could cause the rest of the herd to follow. One broken fence separates a proposed maze from a large herd of cattle, stampeding. The applicant has in his survey plans that he does not propose any fencing. Who should be responsible for upgrading the fencing to keep the livestock and paying patriots safe? The parking lot and the walkway area is dark in the evenings with no proposed lighting. The walkway sits directly beside a large, deep pond with only a few single strands of wire separating visitors from the pond and the horses. Every parent here knows how quickly a child can slip away and how fast tragedy can happen around water. Add in the horses nearby, and nothing stopping children from reaching through, climbing under a fence, and you have another accident. This proposal is more than a corn maze, it's a hazard to farming, threat to livestock, and a danger to families who step onto the property. I've managed the land, lived beside it, I raised my family in this community, I've even lost my son in a tragic farming accident on our property in 2007. Tragedy can happen in a second, and you can't bring them back. I can tell you with absolute certainty that this is the wrong project in the wrong place. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next card is for Chris, is it Lonnie? Lonnie.
Good evening. My name is Chris Lonnie, and I'm here tonight to speak in strong opposition to the proposed attraction. Not because I'm against families enjoying fall activities, because the location is unsafe. The roads cannot handle it, and the risk of our community are far too great. Our parish roads are too narrow, too dark, too dangerous, and already too crowded. Let's begin with Pierce Road. This is a narrow farm-to-market road with little to no shoulder. It was never built for commercial traffic. More importantly, it's one of the main routes to our hospital. A wreck or traffic jam here doesn't just inconvenience people, it can delay an ambulance when minutes mean the difference between life and death. The maze entrance itself, it sits on a blind hill. We have photographs showing long skid marks leading straight down to that entrance. That's not a theory, that's hard evidence of a near accident that already has happened. And with hundreds of cars turning in and out during peak nights, the next skid marks may not stop in time. The main route visitors will take coming up from Baton Rouge and the central area is North Joel Road. That road is barely two lanes wide, with a tight, blind S curve that is already dangerous. Adding hundreds of cars, SUVs, and buses will push it beyond its limits. The likelihood of serious accidents will go up dramatically. The Joel Road and Highway 64 intersection is already dangerous, there are frequent accidents with some resulting in deaths. Traffic routinely backs up from the stop sign for a long distance, especially during peak hours. The intersection has a blind spot issue where motorists at the stop sign fail to see eastbound traffic on Highway 64, leading to dangerous misjudgments. What is already a dangerous traffic choke point will become unbearable, and the accident rate will only increase. I would also like to add that our rural mail carriers drive these same roads, they're stopping constantly at mailboxes. They often sit partially in the lane because there is no shoulder, that's already a dangerous with regard, with regular traffic. With hundreds of impatient drivers trying to pass, these mail carriers will be placed directly in harm's way. The owner's own plans shows cars being parked in one field while families walk across the driveway, right where vehicles are constantly entering and exiting. There is no proposed lighting, and that's also stated in the owner's plans. That means parents with strollers, children, and groups of people will be crossing in near darkness side by side while vehicles are trying to exit. On weekends, these roads are populated with joggers and large groups of bicyclists. Occasionally, you'll even see people riding their horses down these roads. With no shoulder, they already face danger from everyday traffic. Add festival-like traffic, distracted drivers trying to find parking, and cars cresting behind hills, and someone's gonna get hurt. This isn't just about traffic, this is about the safety in everyone who lives, works, and travels these roads every day. Our families, farmers, mail carriers, joggers, horseback riders, and cyclists. Approving this project would knowingly place them all at risk. This community should not be forced to carry those risks, you have the power to prevent it. I urge you to put the safety of our community first, and reject the project.
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next card is for Joette Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Joette Taylor, and I live across the road from the property that's in question tonight. My family has owned the farm next door to Mr. Corville's property for seventy-three years. And the issue that I'd like to talk to you about tonight is what we found missing from the survey map that was handed over to this committee. The missing items, very important pipelines. This is a photo of the property in question. This is the proposed corn maze property. The blue line represents Florida Gas Transmission. This pipeline transports natural gas. There are two lines running underneath our property, and they were placed there in 1966. What I found was that the average lifespan of a pipe and a pipeline company is fifty years. These two lines pushed last week each day over one million cubic feet of natural gas through their lines. That's pressurized, highly pressurized natural gas. That million cubic feet ran right in between the proposed rodeo show area and the proposed flower field attraction, and directly underneath the walkway for the proposed corn maze. The red line up here represents plantation pipeline. It transports refined oil products. With this company, there are three lines running underneath our area, and they were placed there in 1942. These are old lines. These three lines are currently transporting over twenty-nine million gallons per day of gasoline, jet fuel, and diesel underneath our property. And as you can see in this photo, you can see that the current corn maze from last year and the proposed corn maze for this year sit directly on top of these three plantation pipelines. Our other issue with pipelines is hunting. It's just a fact, and it's because of clear line of sight that these pipelines keep. This year, firearm deer season for EBR Parish for youth and for veterans starts on October 25th. That is right in the middle of this corn maze season. Ladies and gentlemen, we understand that we have to live and work around pipelines, but we don't think it's a good idea to invite large groups of people.
Thank you, ma'am, I'm sorry your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next card is for John Morris.
Good evening. My name is John Morris. I live adjacent to the proposed corn maze property. I have called this property in community home for over sixty years. My family has lived on this land for over a century and next to these pipelines for over eighty-five years. My family has lived on this land for over a century and next to these pipelines for over 84 years. Tonight, I come before you to oppose the construction of a corn maze attraction on this property, not as a matter of opinion, but a matter of safety, history, and common sense. Let me review our history, the history of explosions, destruction, lives lost along these pipelines in our area. On August 18th, 1967, 58 years ago today, a gasoline explosion on the plantation pipeline at Dewamick Farm, two miles from the attraction, is proposed, destroying a home, barns, livestock, trees, and tragically taking one life and seriously injuring another. The scene was described in court documents as the trees, shrubs, in the vicinity of the house were ravaged to the extent that the majority have died, leaving a scene reminiscent of a wartime battlefield. In 1977, a Florida Gas Pipeline exploded on Liberty Road, only 1.5 miles from this attraction, causing major damage to nearby homes and property. In 1980, another Florida Gas Pipeline exploded on Plank Road, six miles from this property, causing widespread damage. In 2012, just three tenths of a mile from this proposed corn maze, an explosion on Pierce Road caused major damage and an injury. In 2013, a Florida Gas Pipeline exploded in Franklinton, burning a house and multiple structures. I have lived here long enough to remember the 1977 explosion and the 2012 explosion. The ground shook, the trees flew in the air, people were terrified, and homes were evacuated. These two events were the scariest moments of my 60 years living here. My family and I have been incredibly lucky over the decades to live next to these pipelines without more tragedy. But luck is not a strategy for the public safety and is not a plan for public attraction. Consider this, what if? What if there is an explosion while visitors are in the maze on the pipelines? Who will take responsibility for the lives lost? How will people escape? Which way will hundreds of panicked visitors run when fire, smoke, and debris erupt from them? What is your escape plan? What if?
About 10 seconds, sir.
What if? And this is the corn maze, and this is the pipeline.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Our next card is for Lacey Babin.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lacey Babin. I come before you today in opposition of this corn maze attraction. The owners have already indicated in their pictures submitted to this planning commission that they will not take responsibility for injury or death, posting multiple liability signs throughout the property. In other words, they invite families to their attraction, take their money, send them unknowingly into a potentially hazardous environment, exposing them to possible lethal danger, and then declare, "We are not responsible." He has told neighbors that he wants to scare people in the woods with propane exploding, cannons firing, and a corn maze directly above pipelines carrying hazardous materials. This is a high-risk zone with people completely unaware of the dangers beneath their feet. This is a recipe for disaster. This is inviting disaster for profit. The danger is immediate, unavoidable, and real. This is not what if, the danger is there and real. This is not an issue of personal opinion, this is a matter of public safety. It is a matter of history repeating itself. It is a matter of responsibility. I urge this commission to consider the facts, the history, and the real dangers. The proposed corn maze should not be allowed on this property. The risks are too high, the consequences are too severe, and the potential for tragedy is far too real. I'm asking this commission to please have mercy on this community and say no to this proposal. My husband and I purposely moved out here several years ago to enjoy peace and tranquility in this community. This is what I hope to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is for Thomas Chandler.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Chandler, and I live in this community with my wife and children. I have served in the fire service for over 23 years, so I know firsthand what it takes to save lives in emergencies and what can happen when risk is ignored. Tonight, I want to speak plainly about the dangers of placing a corn maze attraction at this location. This property sits directly above five major pipelines. These pipelines operate under high pressure between 850 and 900 PSI, and if one ruptures, it could release thousands of gallons of flammable fuel in minutes. As a firefighter, I want to stress, pipeline fires are not ordinary fires. This would invoke a hazardous materials response involving highly volatile fuels that can vaporize, spread quickly, and create explosive conditions. Firefighters do not put out pipeline fires. Our job is to preserve life, mitigate a plan of action, to evacuate people, and secure the scene while we wait for the pipeline company to shut off the flow, with the nearest shut-off valve being near the St. Helena-Libesson Parish line. Trying to fight a pipeline fire would be extremely dangerous and would trigger an even bigger danger to public safety. An explosion like this doesn't just burn, the blast wave alone can kill. The noise from high-pressure gas is deafening. Anyone within close proximity who somehow survives the initial blowout would have their eardrums ruptured and would be bleeding from the ears, disoriented, and panicked, all while trying to flee a maze they cannot easily escape. In those moments, the site would look less like a family attraction, more like a terror attack, with smoke, fire, and injured people running in all directions. Patrons would be trapped in a maze while fire ravages beneath their feet. This is not theoretical, these lines have exploded before, and it can happen again. I want you to take a look at this map. Emergency access is another critical concern. This attraction is located on the same farm-to-market road that leads to our nearest hospital. That hospital is a 13-minute trip one way in perfect conditions. That means a 30-minute round trip at best for an ambulance that's without traffic delays or gridlock from panicked evacuees. In an emergency, whether it's a medical issue, pipeline rupture, or flash flooding, ambulances could be delayed or blocked entirely. Every minute lost could mean a life lost. And here's the greater problem, our local hospital is small, it is not a trauma center, and it has no burn unit. In pipeline disaster, burn injuries, blast injuries, and toxic exposure would overwhelm local resources instantly. Local and fire and EMS departments are not equipped or staffed to safely evacuate hundreds of people under such conditions. Federal guidelines state pipeline evacuation zones can extend up to a mile, covering the entire attraction and nearby homes. This area has already been evacuated once in 2012. It is a catastrophe waiting to happen. For the safety of our people, for the protection of our first responders, and for the future of this community, I respectfully urge you to deny this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is for Renee Nielsen.
Good evening, community and commissioners. My name is Renee Nielsen. My young family and I moved to Pierce Road just over two years ago. We have fallen in love with the area, grown close to neighbors, and have become a part of this close community. We not only have an appreciation for our community, we also have an appreciation for corn mazes and the entertainment and education that come with them. Corn mazes can be a great way to bring communities together. However, they should be conducted in a safe manner and location. I cannot attest to how Mr. Corville conducts his business and activities at his corn maze because I have never been. I've seen videos, it does look entertaining. I can, however, attest to the safety of the location that Mr. Corville has chosen. As my neighbors have shared, we have many safety concerns over that location of this proposed corn maze. One of the many concerns is on... One of the many concerns is one that the committee also expressed concerns over in its own staff report. Mr. Corville's property is surrounded by and partially located in a flood zone. The culprits of this flood zone are three creeks, Little Sandy Creek, Bear Branch Creek, and Beaver Creek. All of these creeks run either through or adjacent to Mr. Corville's property, leaving it susceptible to flash flooding. Now, I know you may be thinking, "Who goes to a corn maze in the rain?" Unfortunately, it does not have to be raining in the immediate area for a flash flood to occur. Failed levees and dams, trapped debris and obstructions, as well as rainfall upstream can all be culprits of flash flooding. Imagine, if you will, a corn maze, flower garden, and walking paths full of young families, women, children, babies, enjoying a beautiful day, when suddenly they find themselves surrounded by rushing water and no way to get out. My neighbors and I feel that this, too, is a huge safety concern, especially considering how much water this property has taken on in the past, as well as the devastation that recently occurred in Texas just a few weeks ago. So many little girls lost their lives, and so many parents lost their babies because safety was ignored. Had those cabins at Camp Mistake not been built so close to and in a flood zone, those baby girls might still be safe in their parents' arms. As much as my family enjoy, as much as my family and I enjoy corn mazes, I don't believe we would find a corn maze on this property enjoyable, knowing what we do and having so many safety concerns. Everyone here wants to provide for the children of our community. We want them to learn, grow, play, and have fun. However, as the adults, we first have to responsibly, we first have the responsibility of providing safe environments for the growth and fun to occur. Thank you for your service to this community, and I hope and implore you please decide not to approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is for John Ashford.
Good evening. My name is John Ashford. My wife and I have lived in the Pierce Road community for 25 years. We moved there for a rural, quiet life. I oppose Mr. Corville's Louisiana Corn Maze Attraction. This proposal will cause disturbances and serious risk to our children, neighbors, and community. And referencing the notes section on page C 3.0 of the site plans, Note 1, no sewer treatment is proposed, and 7 restrooms shall be provided at the back of the site near the ADA parking and corn maze. Do I have a question? Are bathrooms already installed? And if so, has sewer treatment been installed in accordance with Louisiana and East Baton Rouge Parish health regulations? Note 2, no noisy equipment is proposed. Past events have included air cannons, propane bombs, loudspeakers, tractor and ATV noises pulling various rides. Pine Grove neighbors reported that the noise was extremely loud and constant. Note 3, no site lighting is proposed. There are no parking lot or pathway lights. Mr. Corville's previous Facebook post mentioned events lasting until 11:00 PM. Without lighting, children and adults alike are at serious risk of injury. Note 4, no surveritudes or easements are proposed. The property is split into three separate owners, Mr. Corville, Mr. Harvey Honoray, and Delta Land Services. There are multiple easements across this property, Verizon, Kinder Morgan, Florida Gas, Delta Land Services, and the owner of the eastern half of the property. Note 5 has already been addressed. Note 6, ADA van accessible signs are the only proposed signage on site. There are no warning signs about pipelines, canals, or other hazards. Visitors will be walking above active pipelines and on dangerous terrain with no warning of risk. This is all-out negligence, not safety planning. Another major concern is the traffic. In Pine Grove, the state highway with large shoulders would have traffic backed up for long distances. Pierce Road is a narrow parish road with no shoulders, which would exacerbate traffic backup and cannot allow shoulder parking. I believe Mr. Corville has put the proverbial cart before the horse. He should have checked with longtime community residents and this commission before spending one penny in any investment in real property and business. Commissions, we deserve peace, honesty, safety, and protection for our children and neighbors. This project is not what it claims to be. I urge you to reject this proposal and protect our community from harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is for Jim Taylor.
Thank you. My name is Jim Taylor. I'm a family physician, board certified in family medicine, and I have 20 years of experience in emergency medicine service for critical access hospitals, including 10 years as director of the Critical Access Hospital in Greensburg. You've heard my neighbors line up a scenario for you. We each took a section and talked about the different things that can happen. And in most major disasters, it's rarely one thing that occurs that causes the failure. It's a series of events that had anyone happen in a different way, we would not have seen the disaster. In the Swiss cheese model, the holes line up, and you see limited access, danger underground, unavailable EMS services, flood zone, all those things mixed together, and say, "Well, okay, maybe we're exaggerating. Maybe this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing, and we're just trying to use this topic to get our way." Well, I have in front of me a list from the Petrochemical and Hazard material Service Association, Safety Association, which is a branch of the Department of Transportation, federal government. From 2025, 2005 to 2024, there are 12,669 pipeline incidents reported across the country, resulting in 256 fatalities and over 1,000 injuries. Now, an injury can be anything from a slight burn to anything up and to, not including the death of a patient. So this is not hypothetical. This is happening across the country already. We do not think that we should put the risk of inviting children and families on top of a pipeline that can do this type of damage. In all of these disasters that we've looked at, again, it was a series of events. But the most serious one and the most dangerous one is the human factor, and that's arrogance. To come into a community and say that if you don't like it, you can move someplace else, while ignoring and not including the pipelines on the submission that was given to you, that's inexcusable. For that reason alone, you should consider denying this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is for Larry Pierce.
How y'all doing? My name's Larry Pierce. I'm 66 years old. I grew up on Pierce Road. It was my great-grandfather's driveway. It stopped at his house. Then they got rightaways and went on through the woods. I was there in 67 when it blew up over Joel Road. I saw the flames go above the trees. I'm a mile and a half away. I was sitting nine years old. I've, my brother, his father-in-law owned the property they have now. They own it, uh... Mr. Joe, that was my brother's father-in-law, he lived on top of the hill across the creek, the creek that cuts across the property, not the one that runs beside it, inside it, it first crossed, the second. He was trapped. There was no rain, no rain where we were raining, no rain where we were. But it was raining everywhere else, and the waters came up so high, we couldn't get tractors across to get to them. They were getting, they were in a trailer, the water was up underneath their trailer. And that thing's three and a half feet off the ground. So we, I had to get a boat from my house, row across that, started at one end of the creek where it started over the property where the neighbors are. And the way it pushed me across before I got, I was all the way across the property, trying to get, finally getting across there to get to them. Then I had to pull the boat all the way around to the curve of that, and then take them, and then we'd come again. And the current carried us all the way to the edge of the property, till the behind the white house, the brick white house that's there. So I know those properties, the property that he, they own, and the water can come up very quickly and surprise you. Other thing is the pipelines. I've lived with them all my life. My grandfather, we worked, we farmed, we were all farmers. I've got it in my blood. We farmed that area. We did not disc over those pipelines. They, the pipeline people, they ran, they did testing that probably in the 80s. Two places, about a mile and a half away from where this proposal is, the water blew out. They blew, shot up, they blow a pig through there, and the pig come shooting out of the ground. Luckily, you know, the cows were there and everything, but we had moved, excuse me, they told us they were gonna be doing that. We moved them up to the front. So two places on that pipeline blew coming on, that was before this. So I, I don't, I know, I love mazes for kids. There's a couple of things, you know, knowing what's going, what the property and how it can be. The other thing is, people who have lived out there for generations, not just a couple of times moved out there, they've been out there for generations, love the community, how quiet it is. I haul hay down these roads. I got a 30-foot gooseneck trailer, and I got bales of hay stacked double high, and I'm coming through there as slow as I can. But you have people who do not, they don't consider us on the road like that. They want to, they try to hurry up and get through there, and we can't take that amount of traffic over there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And the other thing is, you live out there that long, you don't come tell somebody to move.
Thank you. Our next card is for Pam Daughery.
I'm Pam Daughery. I have concerns about the additional traffic going to this attraction. I live near the sharp curves on North Door, and we've already had people run in the ditches there. And it's scary at night when they're in the ditch, and they come to your house and knock on your door. It's really scary. It's dangerous for people there driving, and it's dangerous for the people that have to open their doors, or do you open it these days? I mean, it's just, it's just a very dangerous road. It's very narrow, and it's drop-offs in the ditches. So it's just not, it's a rural road. It's not meant for all this traffic. So thank y'all.
Thank you. That appears to be the last card for those in opposition that wish to speak. We have additional cards who do, who have indicated they do now wish to speak. I'll quickly reading those names for the record. Josh Nielsen, Connie Ashford, Lori Gilpin, James Gilpin, Elizabeth Berge, Kathleen Harrison, James Kelly, Tracy Kelly, Ronald Daughery, Rodney Henderson, Melinda Mayu, Jolynn Taylor, Jill Mascarello. Before I invite the applicant back for his rebuttal, I would like to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Brandon Noel, who is also the councilman for District 1 where this property is located. I'd like to invite him to, to the podium at this time.
Thank you so much, Chairman and Commissioners. Appreciate y'all's continued service to City Parish. I know it's often, often thankless, and y'all probably just do it for the money, right? For those that don't know, they get a sandwich before the meeting. That's their pay. So, so we appreciate y'all hearing everybody. So this is a, this is a tough situation, I know, and y'all hear many of them time and time again. Y'all hear the most contentious arguments over property and, and property rights, and certainly there's a, you know, for those of you who know my stance on a lot of things, I certainly believe in, in property owners' rights and, but that's not without bounds. So I met with applicants last year about this when they were seeking potential rezone, and we had a discussion about it. Of course, I've heard from many of the people here and others about it since then, and, and of course, a lot recently as this has been proposed. So one thing I'll start with is, I've been in real estate for 20 years, a little more than 20 years now. And it's a common practice, for those of you who are familiar, Evan, I know you are, to, you do diligence when you buy a property. We don't see significant diligence on residential, but certainly on the commercial side. And so the applicant, they, they expressed to me, and I believe they said it here, they had talked to the owner that they bought it from, and, and that owner who was selling the property, the most incentivized person to do so, told them, yeah, you can do that. Absolutely. And as we know now, that's obviously not the case. That's why they're here, seeking something other than, than even just a rezone, but the conditional use permit. And I feel for them, I really do, because that's, that's a position nobody would like to be in. But oftentimes, I'm sure, you all are aware, you hear from people, in fact, we heard from one tonight, when Mr. Herring on the property, on Mount Pleasant and Samuel's saying, hey, I, I represent a client who is seeking to purchase this property. He was here to make sure they could do what they wanted to do with the property prior to purchase. And that's a common practice in commercial real estate. They bought this property, I'm assuming, in part because they wanted to commercialize. If they didn't, then great. Then they're on a beautiful piece of property that they intended to spend their retirement on, and this may have been an afterthought. And if that's the case, then here's where we are. But if they intended to do this from the beginning, I think they missed a great opportunity that they should have done their due diligence on the front end, which is typical practice. I have, as I've said, I've discussed this with many people. I've heard from a lot of constituents with grave concerns, most of which you've heard this evening. I was surprised when staff reached out and said they were getting a lot of emails from proponents. At that point, I think it was about 50. It wasn't the 125. So I asked for a list of the, the 50, and I went through them, and it, I realized why I was surprised. I hadn't heard from any proponents other than the applicants. And the reason was because the, there were people from out of state, a lot out of parish, and all of those, of those in the parish, I think one, maybe two, were actually in the vicinity of this and in my district. So it became quite clear that there was, you know, a push, and kudos to them for trying to get people to go fill out the, so you all can get an email to bump the numbers up on proponents. I guarantee you, if you go and look at the addresses of the opponents, it's a far larger divide when you look at people in the vicinity and in the district. Just to paint one other picture, I want to talk about, when you look at our districts and the way the parish is made up, I know many of you, and probably all of you are familiar, with the, the district makeups in our parish. We have 12 council districts, and they're broken up by population. If you look at my district, District 1, Councilwoman Coleman and I and our other colleagues, we all represent roughly 38,000 people. If you look at District 1, though, it's geographically about 1/3 of the parish. The reason for that is because it's far less densely populated. And that's not a mistake. That's on purpose. You all have seen me here at this podium speaking about that on occasion, when items are here that look to increase density in my area. You know my stance on that. Commercializing areas that are traditionally farming and low-density and quiet, I just think is an incorrect step. It is, it's the wrong approach. Again, you've heard a lot of the technical, but I think there's just something to be said for people who have moved out in that area. Commissioner Addison, I know you moved out to that area. I'm sure you didn't because you want a commercial to follow you. I'll let you speak to that. But also, there's people who've been here for generations, like you heard, and this is the way of life that they like to see, and they're not asking for more. And my role as their councilman is to protect what they want in their area. Lastly, I'll leave y'all with, I spoke earlier today to Representative Kelly Hennessy Dickerson. She represents this area. She has some in Livingston Parish and crosses over into our parish and is a representative of this area. She was receiving some calls, had some concerns, wanted to talk to me about it. So we had a dialogue. She shared her concerns. I shared mine. We kind of swapped stories, what we were hearing, what we were seeing, and we're along the same lines on this. And she agrees she couldn't be here tonight, and asked me to offer her comments, which were aligned with mine in opposition. The final thing I'll tell you is I did reach out to Pride Fire Chief Bob Whitaker to ask if he had any concerns, and his were something that you've heard over and over. It's really the traffic concerns for emergency. If you look at this area on a map, there, it's, it's not gridded. There's not, oh, well, you can't get, you just go around to the next road. You know, in emergency situations, and I know we're talking about one-offs, but if you, if you contact Chaneyville Fire Chief or Pride Fire Chief, which they all go out on calls along with Zachary and Central in these areas, they have calls all day, every day. And their ingress and egress to these emergencies, they don't have a whole lot of options. Now, granted, they're not dealing with some of the traffic woes of Baton Rouge, but we all know where seconds matter, they matter. And so any kind of an issue on a road in this area that causes emergency vehicles to have to reroute and go the other way is a massive loss in time, massive. It just can't be understated. So I think there are some serious concerns with this area. Again, I feel for the applicant for having invested in a property. If he was thinking, you know, that he would be able to do this on the front end, again, if it's just beautiful property and we want to retire, and maybe we can do this, then I feel a little bit better about it. But either way, lack of due diligence on the front end prior to purchasing cannot become the burden of the community. It's just, it's a tough spot to be in. I don't envy you all, but I know this is kind of what we sign up for sometimes. So that's my take on it, and I am in opposition to this conditional use permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant back for a five-minute rebuttal.
I want to reassure the commission that our activities do not pose a risk to the public. When plowing up the ground in preparation for the corn maze, the soil has only penetrated four to six inches. This is normal. I farmed for 30 years on different properties. They had pipelines across them. We farmed across them. I, I heard a lot tonight about people saying pipelines blowing up. Well, that is a reality, and that is the real world. Something that happened 50 years ago and what is present today, with the technology they have today. I'm not a pipeline person, but the pipeline people tell me they have pigs. They send down the lines regularly. Those pigs have instrumentation. They can tell if any pipe has got any corrosion or any, they call it anomaly. I don't know everything there is to know about pipelines. We need pipelines in the world today to get products from one place to another. Sounds like a lot of people here today would like to have them all dug up and put somewhere else. I can't change none of that. This is a beautiful farm. It's a beautiful place. We think we can entertain people safely there and not cause any injuries. A lot was said tonight about the roads and the small and narrow roads. We keep parking attendants. We get people off the highway. We get them into 18 acres of parking. We get them off the road. We hold traffic off that want to go out until the cars get in. When the cars get in, then we let those out. Farming is managing a crop. This is not a crop that we manage. We try to manage the people, manage the situation, and we've done it for 24 years very successfully. A lot was made about what we're going to do and how we're going to do that. Nobody came and talked to me about any of that. We do have plans to do things safely with the public. We have a way to take care of injuries that happen, although we've not had any injuries, but we have a plan in place. I don't know anything else to tell you that we've done this for 24 years, and we've provided a wonderful, family-oriented, wholesome experience for families. I've heard the councilmen say we didn't do due diligence on the property. Well, pipelines never entered my mind as being totally dangerous. I heard a lot of what if, what if? Well, we all like to go to the beach and have a good time at the beach. There's sharks in the ocean. What if a shark comes up and bites you? That is a danger. There's dangers everywhere. There are power lines that run right by our homes with thousands of volts of electricity. But if we manage those things, if we do things in a proper way, it's not a problem. They're useful. So I think a lot of this is being blown out of proportion, in my opinion. And I, I don't know what else to say other than, I think some people are upset that are making this into a mountain, and it's just a mold hill. We've done a great job for 24 years. We can continue doing a great job for the public and entertaining them, and they can enjoy a family-friendly farm experience. I think that's what we can provide. The only way to know that is we ought to let us have a chance. They won't let us have a chance. And we've done 24 years of this. We've done it for 24 years. That's all I know to tell you. We're going to do the best job we know how to do. And we want to be a good neighbor to all of our neighbors and provide something that's wholesome for all of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commission members, at this time, I will close the public hearing and invite any questions or comments regarding this item. Questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Scroggs.
Yeah, Director Holcomb, with a conditional use permit, it only survives with this applicant, is that correct?
That's correct. This isn't a rezoning. This is, and I'll read the definition. It's in the UDC, Section 3.5.1. Conditional uses are those uses that are generally compatible with the uses permitted in a zoning district, but require individual review of their location, design, and intensity in order to ensure the appropriateness on any particular parcel of land and the compatibility of the use with the adjacent uses. So what you're voting on tonight is what's described in the plans, the conditions, the additional conditions, such as the hours of operation, the weeks and months of the operation that the applicant provided to the staff and is part of the application. But it's whether or not this particular use, which staff defines as outdoor commercial recreation, is appropriate as described and presented at this particular location.
And if the applicant were to sell the property in the future, if the applicant were to sell the property in the future, the cup would go away, is that right? It would just revert back to its current zoning? The current zoning doesn't change, but the cup goes away, is that correct?
It's two years of cease and the operation.
Additional questions or comments? Any motions from the commission? Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah, I ain't scared. Come on, let's go on with this, you all. And let me say this. I am concerned when we talk about 387 persons being in opposition. I am concerned with these gas pipelines. I am concerned with the safetiness and the narrow highways in 13 miles from Lane Memorial. I am concerned about the traffic, and then from the firemen, the retired firemen, that which he shared. And then I am concerned about the fact that there was no conversation with the folk that live in the area before going forth to try and do this. And then I am concerned about the go live somewhere else, and I think they're living already. And then I am concerned about the 50 years, the 50 years there. Yeah, the pipelines have been there 50 years, and I'm concerned about anything 50 years or older, anything could happen. And so with all of that being said, I make a motion to deny this.
There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Coleman to deny this item. Is there a second to that motion? There's a second from Commissioner Fowler. Are there any objections?
I'm an objection.
We have one noted objection from Commissioner Scroggs. Any additional objections? Any further discussion? Seeing none, that item is denied. At this time, we'll move on to communications, beginning with Director's comments.
Next meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled for Monday, September 15. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish a happy birthday to Commissioner Burnell and Commissioner Addison, who both had birthdays this month.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. And I'd certainly like to also wish a happy birthday to Commissioners Burnell and Addison. At this time, we'll move on to Commissioner's comments, beginning with Employee of the Month. So I would like to, at this time, congratulate Yolanda Derrick from the current Planning Division on being named the Most Recent Employee of the Month. Division on being named the Most Recent Employee of the Month. Yolanda's exceptional performance and dedication have made her an invaluable member of our In her role, Yolanda expertly handles the review of rezoning applications and prepares zoning letters with precision. Her consistent dependability and commitment to excellence ensure that our department operates smoothly and efficiently. Yolanda's outstanding customer service sets her apart. She approaches every interaction with professionalism and a genuine desire to assist, earning the respect and appreciation of both colleagues and applicants. Her positive attitude and willingness to take on new challenges make her a true role model for all staff. Please join us in congratulating Yolanda on this well-deserved recognition. Are there any additional comments from any of the commissioners? If none, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion from Commissioner Coleman, second by Commissioner Addison. If there are no objections, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and good night.